So spare, our ancestors knew the truth. They knew what to do, what to do. Our ancestors were scientists, yes, scientists of the spirit. Our ancestors were wise, to observe the solstice time. Our ancestors knew the time to awaken genius in our minds. Solstice is the time for sun stand still. Solstice is the time for peace and good will. Solstice is the time to meditate so deep. Solstice is the time to slumber and sleep. Solstice is the time the sun stand still. Solstice is the time for peace and good will. Solstice is the time to meditate so deep. Solstice is the time to slumber and sleep. Our spirit stands ready, ready to receive. Whatever we sow, we shall reap. If we have some goals, we will to achieve. Solstice is the time to plant those seeds. Solstice is the time divinely designed. Solstice is the time to train your mind. Solstice is the time to focus on our needs. Solstice is the time to examine our deeds. Solstice is the time divinely designed. Solstice is the time to train your mind. Solstice is the time to focus on our needs. Solstice is the time to examine our deeds. Our ancestors taught us to meditate. Our spirits will deliver what we cultivate. Solstice is the time. Solstice is the time. Cultivate your mind. A time to cultivate your mind.
Are you ready to take a journey within? Know that peace is your true nature. Peace is yours eternally. Whenever, wherever, peace is yours.
Spirit stands ready, ready to receive. Whatever we sow, we shall reap. If we have some goals, we will to achieve. Solstice is the time to plant those seeds. Our spirit stands ready, ready to receive. Whatever we sow, we shall reap. We have some goals, we will to achieve. Solstice is the time to plant those seeds. Solstice is the time the sun stand still. Solstice is the time for peace and good will. Solstice is the time to meditate so deep. Solstice is the time to slumber and sleep. Solstice is the time divinely designed. Solstice is the time to train your mind. Solstice is the time to focus on our needs. Solstice is the time to examine our deeds.
All right.
Our ancestors were scientists, committed and sovereign.
Let me dance that beat. Let's give thanks and praise to our committed ancestors. The enlightened ancestors of all cultures. Who left us a spiritual tradition, spiritual knowledge, which we can navigate these times. Yes. Are you ready? Atapu, everyone. Peace and blessings to you from Comitid Legacy. Put your location in the chat so we can welcome you. I see Sister Janice is with us in the webinar room. We have Aima Nebetep, Tenzin Osuraz with us. George Jones, peace George, Lana Georgia, Tampa's in the house. Okay, Lorraine, did I see you this weekend? There's Dr. Brown. We had a great time in Florida this weekend. Thanks to you, Dr. Brown, you made it happen. Along with our great Shekem Mete'chas E'Abba in the Florida region of Assar Set. Sephutep Ra in New Jersey with joy and happiness. That's what I'm talking about, Kesong Tia Atapu. Joanne from Virginia. And okay, we're getting YouTube lit up here. We have Shen Khashanov of Kemit, right on. Yes, peace. Imani and Goyo, Bonoch, Kamala, Ketnu. Yes, yes, at tap to all divine souls of our ancestors. That music is powerful, right? That's one of our Queen Mothers and one of our members from Washington DC singing about the winter solstice. So I want to welcome you to KGM, Comitid Guided Meditation. Today is the new moon and we have entered into the Heta Ru cycle. But we are also quickly approaching one of the most critical times of the year for your meditations. And you'll find out tonight to hit the big time reset button for all aspects of your life. So important that we're dedicating tonight to an introduction to the winter solstice. We'll be talking about that in a moment. So yes, we give thanks and praise to our ancestors who as our good brother Ashra Quacy, who was in Philly with us just about a month ago said, they left the books in stone. And not only that, they built the great monuments as a testament to their understanding of cycles and the importance of cycles. So we're going to be getting into that with our Master Teacher Raun Nefer Amen in just a moment. We got Chicago in the house. Yes, give me a thumbs up if you can hear me well. Had a little technological upgrade, let's see. Kushan is here from Ohio. Ohio in the house, Sharon, from Nebraska. All right, let's also some energy to Nebraska for real. And we have Hi Shekem Heruhefenu, okay. Chicago Strong in the house. Solstice is the time. Sister Gentia on YouTube with us, John from Los Angeles. Coming to LA in February, John, I hope to see you there. Be talking to you about that. Nebetep, yes, yes. Intukdana on YouTube. Brother dot intentions. Yeah, this is the time to put your intentions into your spirit. Herina Su, also from Chicago. Okay, now Arkansas is in the house on YouTube and the DMV is here. We have St. Petersburg, Sister Celeste. Boy, they got a good black owned restaurant in St. Petersburg. Let me tell you, I'm ready to go back there right now. Uh, let's see, there's a Shekem from Florida. And we have Ketnu, Sandra. Oh, I see you Sister Sharon, you need to pack up some of that, uh, what was it? The Berg and ship that right up here. Uh, let's see, Mark is here from North Cackalacky. Yes, Irmal, my man in California. And we have Carrie Mingo on the YouTube channel. Good to see you, Sister. I know you've dealt with the solstice. Do you know that the current popularity? Some of you heard about the winter solstice, right? And people are doing all kinds of stuff over the winter solstice. That the current popularity of the winter solstice really is the, um, the effect of the work of Raun Nefer Amen, who was talking about the winter solstice back in the seventies, 1972, 73, 74, uh, and years on. So in the modern era, if you want to call it that, the understanding, the, uh, understanding of the importance of the winter solstice was really started with our special guest, our Master Teacher. And, uh, and he has the deepest understanding of what to do at the winter solstice. We're going to get into that in just a moment. I want to welcome everybody. Do we have any first timers here? I see we have, okay, Shajonta Johnson on our YouTube channel, peace to you. Sharifa's here. Okay, Sharifa from Ohio. Yes, missed you the other day. And Delia from New Jersey. Okay, great, 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 sound is working. We have Odawatsenekamnatei from the DMV, yes. And if you haven't noticed, if you don't know about it, you're down there, you gotta check out the Senbev Cafe and Food Co-op. How many years has that been, Queen Mother? Let us know. And we have Jerry, Jerry Norris is here with us and Noel. All right, we're filling up the webinar room. We usually have 200 by now. And Shem Chas is with us. Okay, Queens is in the house. Shekem Sasgami. And we have Tariq from Atlanta. Oh, you frequently go, very good, very good, yes. We gotta big up our own businesses. Beautiful. All right, well, let's get it started. So I'm Emtehuti Komo from the Assar Set Society. That is the nation's largest and longest established organization, spiritual organization, based on the principles, the philosophy, the spiritual practices of ancient Kemit. Started, founded back in 1973 by our Master Teacher Raun Nefer Amen and been observing the winter solstice and doing our best to learn how to adapt this ancient understanding of cycles to our lifestyles in the modern day so that we can be lifted up by the biorhythmic changes of the earth, by the astrological energies of the earth as it's moving throughout our solar system. Uh, and we can be lifted up by it, empowered by it, as opposed to trying to figure out what's going on, right? Don't know what time it is. So with that, I want to bring to the stage the founder of Comitid Legacy and the Assar Set Society, the world renowned author of the Meduniter volume, seven volume set, the vehicle through which the Meduniter oracle came into being, and the architect of the courses that we have and programs that you have been enjoying with Comitid Legacy. So let's put our virtual hands together and let's say Anetjirak, power, peace and blessings to our Master Teacher Raun Nefer Amen. Shekem or Shekem. Anetjirak.
Peace and blessings, ragatapu, to all of you. So that was a wonderful music there. That song that the Queen Mother from DC was singing.
Yes.
The lyrics were very meaningful. And it's quite a good thing to hear songs that celebrate our divinity and the wisdom of our ancestors.
Yes, indeed. So welcome Shekem, Shekem. I know that you are doing well and, uh, it's always good to have you here helping to guide us along this spiritual path. And usually we would be talking about the lunar cycle. But tonight we wanted to shift gears because of the very, very important time that we're in. So I'm excited to hear what you'd like to share about the winter solstice. Uh, and if you are brand new with us, put a one in the chat. If you're not familiar with the winter solstice, put a question mark in the chat so we know who is with us. So thank you Shekem, Shekem for being here with us once again.
Thank you so much. Yes, you know, the winter's, understanding the winter solstice is based on two principles. One is renewal, the principle, the reality of renewal. And the other one is the law of cycles. You see that? We all know that our body, you know, is growing from day to day, week, month to month. And we measure our growth by years, an annual cycle. You know, we do not, we say we grow a year when our, you know, birthday returns and so on. So we monitor our growth through, you know, a cyclical, you know, function here. It is very important to understand that every single body, I mean, every single cell in our body is renewed constantly. Some cells are renewed, you know, on a 24 hourly basis, cycle. Other cells are renewed on a weekly or monthly. Some take a year, some take seven years. So the thing is that there would be no growth of our body if the cells in our body were not renewed periodically. This is very important to understand. So what is taking place at the winter solstice from the ancient perspective? It's an observance of the renewal process of our bodies, our mind, our psyche, our spirit. Because we cannot grow physically, mentally, psychically, socially, and therefore, you know, socially, we cannot grow in our minds and our psyche and so forth unless the cells in our physical body are renewed constantly. Unless the faculties of the mind and the psyche are renewed, you know, periodically, you know, we cannot grow. You see that? So in ancient times, this observance and celebration of the winter solstice, you know, was based on the understanding that the winter solstice marked the most important time of the year in which the renewal process of the mind, body, psyche, and the spirit took place. It is misleading and of no value to say that, oh, the planet is renewed. You know, on December the 31st, they say, well, that's the pushing back of the old year and bringing in of the new year. You know, the only thing that is new at that time of the year is your mind, your psyche, your body. Meaning that the most important renewal changes take place, you know, at the winter solstice. You see that? So your survival depended on, you know, an accurate renewal of the cells in your body. I want to say that again here. The most important thing about the solstice is the renewal of your physical body. Every single step in your body, you know, experiences is the deepest, you know, renewal process. Which is the foundation of you having a good year, a better year, and coming year. You see that? So when you go around wishing to have, you know, a better year coming next year, when you go around partying and celebrating the gifts that you're giving yourself now at the winter solstice or Christmas time, it's when that is not the time for that to take place. You should be focusing, you know, on how to, you know, be a part of the renewal process. You see that? When you go around rejoicing about the gifts that you are going to, that you're expecting from your pledges to do better. When you go about celebrating, you know, the improvement of your health and your finances from doing what? From wishing for that to take place. When you go about doing those things instead of doing what you should be doing, you see, meaning from the knowledge of the ancestors that given to you, you're deluding yourself. You see that? When you go around wishing, you know, there's a time, the only time of the year that people go around really singing songs, you know, of peace on earth. Peace between people of this earth. They don't do it any other time of the year. Because somewhere, somehow, you know, people learned that the winter solstice had to do something to do with peace. You see that? The cultivation of inner peace is a daily, should be a daily thing. But the most receptive time for your psyche and your mind to accept the principles of peace, the behavior of peace, the humility, the thing that you have to do in order to be at peace with your fellow woman and fellow man. You see, the most important time of the year to do that is at the winter solstice. Why? Because it is then that your mind, your body, you see, the neurotransmitter production faculties within you, you know, are at their deepest level of expression. It's very typical wrapping your mind around how people have deviated so far from a simple truth. That is the most important thing for your wellness and your well-being. Let me say that again. Wellness, well-being, health, financial, you know, security, health. All of those things we want. And somehow there's, you're falling into the belief that if we go around singing and partying on December 31st, you see pledging to have a better year or whatever, that somehow that type of, that, that, that action is going to somehow bring about those changes that you're looking for. For you to have those changes, for you to realize those goals, your mind has to be functioning better. That requires for the cells in your brain to be renewed, for the faculties of your mind and your psyche to be renewed. That is what is going to be new, that is, is new in the year. And that renewal does not take place on December the 31st. It takes place on the four days of December 21 to December 24, which are the four days of the solstice. The word solstice, saltisha, just means to stand still. Meaning that there's a relationship between the earth and the sun that changes from day to day. You know, as the declination of the sun to the earth, you know, occurs on a daily basis. You see that? So that, that change in the relationship, you know, on a daily basis, stands still for four days, 21 to 24, there is no change in the declination of the sun to the earth. And that's where the word solstice, saltisha, comes from. You see that? Now, the sun and the earth and the relationship are not the causes of the changes, you know, in your brain, in your mind, in your psyche, your spirit. They're not the causes. They, they mark, they chronicle the progression, you know, of these functions. And that is why the ancient Egyptian people, the commitings, you know, they, they spent the equivalent of billions of dollars over periods of several decades to bring, to construct the great pyramids of Giza, of Khufu, and the sun, Mankhara, and Kafrah. That's the reason why those pyramids were copied, you know, by the, um, the, the people in Mexico. You see, when, all those pyramids in Mexico, you know, are clocks that, you know, through certain configuration, you know, they line up with the rising sun at, you know, at sunrise and at midday to announce that the renewal of your bodies and your mind and your psyche is taking place. They say that on from December 21st to 24th. This thing about the New Year's from January 1st, that's a pure false invention of Western culture. There's nothing that's happening chronologically, biologically, you know, astrologically, astronomically. You see, nothing is taking place in the world to renew you on December the 21st or January the 1st. That is a pure delusion, you know, of people that are manipulating and transforming an ancient reality to make, I guess, to make money. Lot of money is generated, you know, in the false celebration of the renewal of time of your mind and your psyche and your body. Imagine that if somebody said to you that you did a special thing, you would have $50 million in one day. Would you choose to not do that special thing? Would you choose to party instead? Would you choose to drink, get drunk instead? Would you choose to do something other than what you were shown to do to renew your body, mind, psyche, and spirit? Because that is where the renewal will come, will come from. That is where the New Year gifts and benefits and the improvement of your mind, your health will come from, you know, the things that you do to observe the winter solstice, beginning on December 21st to the 24th, and then followed by three more months of cultivation. You see that? The word winter means to turn in. Win-ter is to turn in, meaning just to pull away from the outside world and focus your attention on the mind, the psyche, and the spirit. Because those are the three months of the year where the foundation for the other nine months, you see, of, of activity and realization takes place. But like everything that is of ancient, from ancient civilizations, you know, this knowledge was perverted and changed for empty, you know, ceremonies. But that's just based on, you know, you know, people partying and having a good time and so on. So to recap what I've said so far here, okay. The same way that your, every function in your body is in a biological clock. Meaning that if, for example, your blood pressure is not the same all year long, all day long. Your blood pressure waxes and wanes, you know, hits the heights on the tops at midday and drops to the lowest numbers, you know, at midnight, well, 3 o'clock in the morning. And around 3 o'clock, they said it's lowest and your blood... And around 3 o'clock, you said it's lowest and, uh, your blood pressure is high as around 3 o'clock in the afternoon. That's the law of cycles governing your blood pressure. Does the same thing to your breathing capacity, your circulation, the ability to, uh, digest food, the ability to sleep well and so forth. This is the reason that we sleep better at night is because that's a point, that's a biological clock that is, that is governing that. You see that? And the same thing happens, you know, in the cycle of the year. You know, our ability to renew the mind and the psyche and the body and so forth, yes, is at its greatest. So to not know how to renew, take advantage of that renewal process, you see that, is like, is like disregarding the fact, for example, that let's say, the truth is, for example, we have cancers, all of us have cancerous cells in our body at all times. Well, those cancerous cells, you know, are, are scheduled to be eliminated on a daily basis. Some times of the day, you know, are stronger than other times of the day. But that knowledge of how to destroy those cancerous cells and how to promote them is kept from the public. You see that now? Knowing what you could do about the renewal of our body cells will help us, you know, dive, dying from cancer and many other illnesses. And the same thing happens with your psyche and your mind. So there's this great misunderstanding of what the, what the winter solstice is and how to observe it and celebrate it. You see that? So during the winter solstice, you see, we need to shift gears, December 21st and 24th, and we want to, we want to also prepare for those four days several weeks in advance. That's why we're speaking to you today. So you can understand that if you begin to study about the importance of those four days, that's the alarm, letting you know that it's time enough for you to spend the next three months focusing on the, the things that will help you to renew, renew your brain cells, renew your cardiovascular cells, renew your psyche, your mind. You see that? Okay? Then you will achieve those things that you're, that you think you're going to get by just simply pledging to do better. You see that singing songs of peace and goodwill to all men will not do it. Peace and goodwill to all men will only come about, you see, when, you know, we do the proper work to renew the brain, the mind, the psyche and so on. These involves changes, certain types of changes, which will not involve getting drunk and eating more meat and things of that nature that people do at the so-called New Year's Eve. Okay? It involves special meditations, okay? And not the kind that we, that have been popularized, you know, in, in the internet. You know, people think that just by being quiet and not getting caught up in the thought process is enough. The ancient civilizations meditated with scripts, meaning rituals. They have scripts that enable them to, to, uh, bring into, in, into synchronization, you see, the contributions from the mind, the psyche and the body. You see that? If you meditate, you're not going to achieve your goals or too much, you're not going to get, your goals will not be achieved as you would like them to be in the same quality as you need them to be unless you know how to meditate properly and unless you are meditating with a script that ties together your visualizations, your affirmations, you know, your breathing techniques and breathing responses to the challenges of life. So we have prepared for you, okay? As we have done for the past 50 years, you know, special meditations and instructions and how to prepare yourself for the solstice, you know, and then how to take advantage of those four days. And then the other three months that, you see, that correspond to the winter, the, the winter spiritual cultivation. So at this point, I will pause for a while to take some questions for you. I know it's been a mouthful here, so I gave you the chance to ask some questions, you know, so we can, um, you know, take this discourse to another level.
All right. So welcome, family. We do have some new folks with us, some first timers with us, and also a few folks who it is their first time really being exposed to information about the winter solstice. So welcome, welcome. You can put any questions that you might have as we go along in the chat and we will make sure that we, we get to answer your questions. So Shekma Shekma, that's a powerful understanding that you brought forth and that our ancestors institutionalized into their ways of life. And for those folks who are not quite familiar, you could, you could live throughout the years and not notice, you know, big changes in cycles. But one thing that we do notice is the increase and decrease of light, that in the wintertime, we have less hours of daylight and in the summer, we have maximum hours of daylight. It balances it out in this, in the equinoxes. And some of this change in, in the amount of light has been associated with mood changes, including seasonal affected disorder, I think they call SADS. Can you speak a little bit about light? And is that really one of the major things that's behind the reset that you're talking about in the brain's master clock? And you also mentioned genes in our body being sensitive to changes in time and changes. Uh, I, I don't know if that's connected with the changes in light.
Yes, you know, there, there's an organ in our brain that responds to the change in light and that's the organ that is responsible for the secretion of melatonin. And that organ, that organ, of course, is the pineal gland, okay? It's very sensitive to the, the changes that take place, you know, in the cycle of a year, as well as cycle of the day. You see that? And, and it, and it regulates the, um, the biological clock, you know, in our, in our being. So, um, the, the whole thing about, you know, um, the melatonin, okay? And some people, of course, incorrectly have fallen into the trap of believing that the more melatonin you have, the more melanin you have, the smarter you are. That is something that is very incorrect. You see that? There, there are a lot of, you know, um, other hormones and neurotransmitters in the brain that, that contribute to your genius, you know, and they also respond to light. You know, another one that responds to light, of course, is the, is the, um, neurotransmitters that governs our ability to be motivated. You see that? Okay, as well as to be, you know, um, relaxed and have a good night's sleep and balance and so forth. And that's serotonin. You see that? Enables to, you know, as well as, um, the, the, to be more sociable. You see that? Okay? So these are all different, you know, uh, hormones and, and messenger chemicals that the brain uses in response to light. I'm very sensitive. So that people might, they might think that, okay, if I meditate, I can correct the mood changes. But more important than meditating is getting the right amount of sunlight and so on. And as well as cultivating virtue. You see that? In other words, people who are virtuous, meaning ethical and moral and so forth, they generate more, but more powerful and beneficial neurotransmitters than people who just simply meditate, you know, be quiet and ignore the intruding thoughts and so on. I mean, that's good. I teach that, but it's not the main source of well-being.
Interesting. Yes, so, so this reset, um, there's some things on the internet. I was just taking a look at in preferential for tonight and it spoke about the increased light exposes triggers to the suprachiasmatic nucleus. Now, what that is, it's the circadian master clock that affects 20,000 genes in the body and changes our sleep pattern, our sleep architecture. So for those, those of us who are already kind of out of biorhythmic order, meaning let's say people who come alive at night or have a, have a hard time going to sleep, you know, during the evening or wake up in the middle of the night and maybe they have a low biorhythm in the morning, you know, kind of like night owls or people that are not adjusted to the, the natural biorhythm in that way. Is this opportu, is this an opportunity to kind of reset that and get back in sync with the, with the natural biorhythmic cycles?
Not really, not really. You know, what, what will help you to get in sync with the natural rhythm is to learn and identify the things that upset that rhythm on a daily basis. You see that? For example, you know, one of the greatest, you know, uh, disruptor of the, uh, of a, of a biological clock is the most popular drink in the world, coffee. You see that? In other words, coffee, you know, um, you know, it, it keeps you awake and it interferes with the, the quality of sleep, meaning that some people say, oh, I can drink coffee and go to sleep. You know, it's not, it doesn't bother me. You don't, you're not aware of fact that it's intruding in the quality of your sleep. You see that? It's intruding as the, you read from the internet, you know, uh, post there, that it affects the performance of your, of your DNA, you know, and many other hormones, you know, hormonal structures within you, functions within you. You know, exercise, you know, like, for example, people, let me finish with the coffee, for example, right? The, the, the worst time to have coffee is past 5:00 PM. You see that? Okay? And coffee takes, the, the, the half cycle of coffee is, um, six hours. Meaning it takes six hours for the body to this, to detoxify, you know, um, the, the coffee that is consumed. Okay? So the thing is, is that if you, if you're drinking coffee, let's say past 4:00, 5:00 PM, you know, you're, you're setting yourself up to not having a good quality of sleep. You see that? Another disruptor of your biological cycle is, um, exercise. Doing heavy exercises past 3:00 PM, past 4:00 PM. And of course, you know, for whatever reasons, people cannot get to the gym until they get off work. So they go to the gym at 6:00 PM, 5:00 PM, 6:00 PM, revving up that, you know, stay awake, you know, faculty. And yes, you can sleep because you're exhausted, but your quality of sleep is disrupted. You see that? And like that, many other things that you eat and things you consume, even, let's say the green tea matcha. Very good for your well-being and everything, but it has caffeine in it. You say, take it at the 4:00 PM, it's going to interfere with the quality of sleep. So you've got to take the time and study all of the different things that improve your sleep and, and, and disrupt the quality of sleep and, and adhere to these faculties. You see that? The other thing too is the best time to go to sleep is 11:00, you know, PM. You see that? That was, this is from the teachings of ancient Daoist masters of ancient China. Yes, so when we stay up late, you know, got a bunch in watching TV and whatever else that we're doing, reading a good book, whatever, we are interfering with the biochemical, biological clock, the chronobiological cycles within us, which does not simply, it's just not simply the circadian rhythm of a day.
And this, and this actually affects our genes?
Well, you know, the, the genes are renewed on a regular basis, correct? You know, so which means is there anything that, you know, interferes with this, the, the cyclical rhythm of, you know, what has to be done in your body? Whatever interferes with that can create, can, can add to the, um, transcription errors in our gene. You see that? Okay? Because the genes are like master blueprints that, you know, the, the body takes, you know, pictures of to use for the renewal process for the generation of, of new cells. For the, for the, uh, the, the, um, the, the, what called the stem cells, right? You know, the stem cells are cells that, you know, are, that are converted into any other cells in the body, right? So they're like master, you know, um, blank, you know, that you know reprint, you know, new gene on the new gene goes on the stem cells and so forth. So what happens then is that errors are committed. If that's, if that, you know, that, that process, you know, is involved, is involvement of many, many other faculties working together. They have to be on time, have to be synchronized. But if your body's cycle is thrown out of whack because you're, you're doing things that disrupt your, your cycle, and it could be things that are not necessarily bad in themselves, you could just simply be, you know, a, a, a jet trap traveler. You could be, you know, uh, working for airline, you know, crossing, you know, uh, time zones and so on. But the body doesn't protect against, you know, sins against nature. You see that? And, and that's what the Yellow Emperor, Clasius, Menstrual Medicine, the, the great Daoist doctor meant when he said that this, the, the, the superior doctor does not treat people who do not follow the Dao. You see that? Lao Tzu said that, you see, the only thing you need to do in life is to follow the Dao. But by the Dao, Lao Tzu meant the cycles. And of course, this modern world that we live in, so-called modern, you know, has totally, you know, turned upside down, okay? Living in harmony with the cycles. And there's no cure for, for disrupting, for breaking the law of cycles. So to the best of the ability, learn the law of cycles, the Dao and so forth. Or, you know, Google or go to, um, Amazon and look for book on the bio cycle, psychobiology and so forth. Bios, what is it? Cycle, cycle biology or biological cycles or chronobiology, all the different headings. Look up books, you know, that explain these things.
So before we leave the subject of coffee, which is a, a daily delight for a lot of people, is it something that we should avoid altogether or is it just when you have it and how much you have? Are there benefits to drinking coffee?
Well, coffee has, uh, let's say in the morning, take it in the morning, one morning, maybe two cups a day, you know, not too strong and so on. And then watch your tolerance, watch how, you know, how well your body, you know, detoxifies it. Let's say that. Okay? Uh, and it has, taken that way, it has been shown to be beneficial for certain cancers, you know, the, the flavonoids and so forth that coffee has and other cardiovascular diseases and so forth. But taken in excess or taken in the afternoon, late afternoon and past that time, then it's no longer helpful. But there hasn't been a lot of, you know, pushback against, you know, overconsumption of coffee because it is the most, is the most, you know, um, drunk, the, the, the most drunken, uh, is that the correct word? Drunken herb, you know, uh, on the planet. You see that?
So Tenzin says that, uh, if I have decaf coffee daily, by the end of the week, I'm having trouble sleeping. Does caffeine accumulate in the body?
Well, decaf coffee may not be 100% decaffeinated, okay? And there are some scientists that says that the chemicals that are used to decaffeinate the coffee might be worse. And there are some scientists that says that the chemicals that are used to decaffeinate the coffee might be worse than the caffeine itself. You see that? In other words, you substitute one demon for another one.
So Thais says he's been struggling with this recently and no more coffee.
Well, you know, there are other things, if you drink coffee for the caffeine, meaning alertness and mental focus and so forth, you know, try having some black tea instead or try having some matcha. This is half a teaspoonful of matcha, you know, will really, it's full of chemicals that are called,
Polyphenols, is it?
Polyphenols, right. You know, which are very powerful chemicals to improve the circulation of blood throughout your body. You see that? As well as, you know, especially towards the brain, the polyphenols normally cross the brain barrier and take more blood and oxygen to the brain, you know, but you gotta, you gotta find just the right amount of that to take. And because it crosses the brain barrier, you might want to consult your physician before you load up on polyphenols and so on. You see that?
Yeah, and I'm sure we'd also want to consider all of the wonderful sugars, creams and things that people put in a coffee, which is, you know, the real enjoyment for a lot of folks, not the coffee itself. Okay, and then-
Because coffee for medical purposes, you know, is more valuable than coffee for fun. Yes. In the past, I drank a lot of coffee because, you know, I was writing all those books. You see that? But over the years, I've learned more about, you know, different certain biochemicals, you know, that are, that I've taken the place of coffee, so I've been coffee free now for quite a while. You know, every once in a while I have a coffee or two every 30, 40, 50 days, especially if I travel somewhere, you know. But for the most part, I've sworn coffee away.
And you've replaced that with some other things, so you're going to share the secrets with us on that yet? Shekem, shekem.
Well, with a proper book, you know, because you have to make sure that, you know, you do not promote something that, it's like it was to most people, but then one out of 100 people find it to be problematic. And I don't want to tell people what, you know, and there's a very good book by that by the name of William D. William D. L. I. That can help you find, you know, foods that you can substitute for drugs.
That was B.L.I.?
William Lee L.I.
Oh, Lee, Lee, oh, yes, okay. Yes. And Zahura in our webinar room asks, is mushroom coffee better?
Well, mushrooms are not a coffee. Okay.
Well, there's some compounds now they call mushroom coffee, I think it's got some coffee in it.
No, no, no.
A mushroom extract.
That's marketing. There's no caffeine in any of the mushrooms, okay? They're promoting a drink that can, that can be prepared to taste like coffee. You know, beneficial effects on your cognitive abilities, you see that? But it's no caffeine in the coffee. The lion's mane coffee is one of the, I mean, the lion's mane in a mushroom. And a few other mushrooms are very good for cognitive functions, especially the lion's mane. But it's not a coffee, it's like calling tea, tea, when tea is the name of an herb, but people call all herbs that are drunk in that way tea.
Right.
When the marketers take over something to make money, they destroy everything. No, no, you know. I mean, but the mushrooms, the lion's mane, you know, to improve your cognitive behavior. And things like nature is fine to take, nobody's finding anything wrong with it. Yes, I, for example, can't take it because, you know, it affects my joints. Whenever I try to drink the lion's mane, for some reason, my knees, you know, get a little stiff and painful. But the other things I can take in place.
Okay, so just coming back a little bit to what you said earlier, Shekem, shekem, about the pineal gland and its responsibility for making melatonin and also responding to light, changes in light, I believe. There's a lot of literature now and people speaking about the pineal gland and its role in our spirituality. And some people's pineal glands being calcified and so on. I know in some of your work, you've spoken a lot about the prefrontal cortex of the brain, not so much about the pineal gland, what are your thoughts about the pineal gland and its relationship to our spiritual development?
Well, the pineal gland, the relationship to spirituality is nothing new. The relationship of pineal gland to spirituality goes back all the way back to Madame Blavatsky and the early days of the Golden Dawn Rosicrucians. That was about in the 19th century or so, late 18th century, early 19th century, when the different, you know, Rosicrucians or the Golden Dawn and so forth. They were looking for a hormonal, you know, coincidence with the chakras of Kundalini Yoga, you see that? So they correlated the chakras of Kundalini Yoga to the different hormonal glands, which were, you know, what we would call Fauts Biology 101. In other words, you know, the roles and function that were attributed to the pineal gland, you know, and other glands, hormonal glands, is totally erroneous. And totally, you know, in the face of advances, great advances in biology. You see that? There's nothing in the pineal gland that will make you smarter or give you, you know, psychological powers and, you know, clairvoyance and things like nature, you know. And all of the higher behavior, moral behavior that have been attributed to the pineal gland really comes from the prefrontal cortex, you see the prefrontal lobe. And this is dangerous information to distort, you see, because, you see, if you don't know that all of these spiritual functions are dependent on the, on the, um, the prefrontal lobe and learn about the truths about the prefrontal lobe, you may keep damaging the most important part of your brain. Or should I would say the most important brain within you, you see, which is what's going on. You know, you damage that faculty, you know, and you throw your spiritual, not only your spiritual future, but your financial acumen, you know, your social, you know, morality away. You see that?
So if you're just joining us, we're talking to Raun Nefer Amen, the Shekem or Shekem, Assar Set Society, the author of the Medu Nater seven volume set and the channeler of the Medu Nater Oracle. He is the founder of the modern information, in the modern era. He's the one that reintroduced the practice of observing the winter solstice way back in the 70s and brought that to the African community and to the world at large. We're talking about the Winter Solstice 2025. And we have a powerful Winter Solstice program and course that we will be rolling out in next week. And we wanted to give you a prelude tonight of understanding that this is the time to get ourselves in order to make major changes. The changes that we want to see in 2026 and beyond will be riding on the behaviors, the meditation practices that we will be given in the coming weeks to observe over the winter solstice, which occurs from December 21st to the 24th and which is the marker of the winter season, which continues all the way till March 21st or so at the spring equinox. So next week, we will be detailing all of the facets of the program that we're rolling out for you to be able to start in December, so you're not caught on the 31st of December after the major period has already begun and missed the moment to declare what your intentions are. And Shekem, shekem, it's very interesting how some of these practices, these diluted practices that we've inherited kind of have the truth right in front of our eyes because we don't call the declarations that we make at the New Year's Eve, you know, the revelation of goals or ambitions, we say resolutions, meaning to become resolute about something. Can you speak a little bit about that and how the ancients observed this sacred time and what it had to do with focusing on our resoluteness to achieve spiritual goals as well as material?
Absolutely. First of all, the ancient Egyptians spent the equivalent of billions of dollars and several decades constructing those pyramids that are the celestial clocks, that, you know, chronicles and tracts, you know, the movement of the sun in relation to the earth. And that's how they were, that's how they knew when the winter solstice and equinoxes, you know, came around. You see that? So it had to be something very important, extremely important for the pharaohs to spend the equivalent of billions of dollars and decades in constructing these pyramids. And for the Mexicans with their pyramids to, um, to copy those, you know, those works. And then we find in Stonehenge, okay, you know, people thought, up until recently, people would go at every winter solstice to England, wherever they thought that was. And they was, what they thought to be, you know, replaying of ancient, you know, savage, you know, rituals. You know, welcoming the sun rising and nonsense like that. So the thing to understand here is that, you know, the winter, the new year is celebrated in the world. People do what? They drink, they get drunk, they party, they eat a lot of meat, you know, et cetera, et cetera. They're introducing into their bodies, you know, the very things that will destroy and that will hold back the vitality and health of their brain and the different faculties that they need in order to do better in the new year to come. So they're taking the same bad behavior into the new year, not understanding that, you know, making resolutions and pledges to who? Nobody has ever said that that is going to somehow improve your life. It's delusion, you see that? Keep in mind that at the so-called new year, people, you know, they engage in their most powerful and meaningful pledges and resolutions. Why not to do that in May? Why don't they do that in April? Why don't do that in November? Why on January 1st, they think that by writing on a piece of paper their bad habits and tearing it up or whatever that is that the people do, that those actions are going to improve their lives? But the fact that so many people do it, you know, for over a long time, shows that there's some nugget of truth there. There's some degree of truth in here, and that degree of truth is simply that people, you know, at one point inherited a knowledge that there was something special about resolving yourself around that time of the year. Unfortunately, today they do it, you know, what, six days? No, no, 10 days, I'm sorry, five days too soon. I mean, too late, you see that? So those are the problems that we are looking, that we are expecting to solve and so on. Once people begin to know that the gifts of, that the people exchange at Christmas and the good life that expect in the new year to come will can only be the result of serious spiritual work, you see that? And they might as well start by observing the four days, December 21st to the 24th, and then learning how to meditate, learning how to eat and a healthy lifestyle. And meditate heavily for the three months, past the winter solstice to impregnate their minds and improve their talents to achieve their goals. You see that? Doing the same work at another time of the year will yield results, but not as well. This is the best time to do it.
Yes, so we're talking about, as you introduced, the body, the mind, the psyche all renew every year at this time. So we have Craig, who's on our Facebook channel. And he asked the question, is there a difference between the heart and the psyche? And how do we know the difference?
Well, I can imagine that he's talking about the art, the heart used as a symbol, as a metaphor, okay, for, you know, the focal part of your feelings, you see that? When I say, you know, from the bottom of my heart, you know, I love you, I care for you, whatever, I was, from the bottom of my heart, I'll take care of you, they are looking at that part, it's a metaphor for whom. That saying the heart doesn't really elucidate, but somewhere inside of you, there's something within you that will vouch for your sincerity. You see that, that's just metaphor, that's not spirituality. That does not identify the actual faculty of the spirit or the faculty of the psyche or the mind that is going to be responsible for the spiritual things that you are seeking to convey. So I hope that answers his question.
Yes, and he was speaking about the psyche, which we often get confused in the manner that it's spoken about with, I guess, either the, what we would call the spirit or the subconscious?
Yeah, in other words, as I pointed in all of my books, in all of my books, I spent a lot of time, you know, revealing and showing that a lot of books, a lot of words that is supposed to explain, you know, spiritual realities within you, you know, have been misdefined. And part of the problem that students have is working with mistaken definitions of many words, you know, and aspects of being. You see that the psyche is that part, the lower part of spirit, you see that is tied in very closely to the survival functions of the physical body responsible for your emotional, you know, responses to the challenges of life, the situations of life. That's the psyche. The ancient word for psyche or psyche is the soul, you see that? It's the body governing your feelings and your emotional responses. You know, and the heart is just simply a metaphor for a certain part of the psyche. You know, that's supposed to validate, you know, your sincerity, you know, in certain occasions. But the problem is, like I said, with the mounting of misdefinitions, when you speak about the subconscious mind, you know, all mental activities are subconscious, you see that? The subconscious has to do nothing else with all the functions within your being that are performed by, you know, what we call the not self, which is spirit, mind, psyche and body. They all function automatically and subconsciously.
And meditation then, is this the primary vehicle for us affecting? You know, when you think about the so-called subconscious or the psyche being a source of problems because we are responding out of our conditioning and our conditioning behaviors can all, you know, often be harmful or bad habits. Is meditation the means through which we alter that part of- Is meditation the means through which we alter that part of us?
The way to alter the responses of the psyche, you see, is by meditations conducted with a script. It's a way, and I introduced that several years ago, you know, scripted meditation. And a scripted meditation, meditation has, with a script, has, the script has four parts to it or five parts to it, depending on, you know, what you want to accomplish. And it begins with synchronizing, you know, an event with a mental and psychological response. You tie those two together. And once you make the connection between your, you know, the events in your life that trigger certain behavior, you see that through meditation, you know, you replace the negative response with a positive response, you know, that is now defined by, you know, an affirmation of the truths that govern your spirit. I know what I'm saying is it's a mouthful, but I've written several books to explain that, you know, because of the nature of this complexity. For example, let me give you an example. Let's say that, you know, I'm wired to, to let's say, run away, you know, when I see a dog coming, you know, in my path. You see that? And I run away, it's an automatic response. I'm not thinking about it, just simply I have a knee jerk reflex, run away from dogs. You see that? So I take into trance, meditation to put me into trance. And then I will see it in that trance state. I'm going to visualize the dog coming in my direction. And I see myself, you know, breathing normally and from lower abdomen and feeling peaceful and therefore not running away from the dog. So that's an example of how a script will use meditation to re-trigger a proper response as opposed to the old triggers, you know, that we are addicted to. You see that? You see something, you know, chocolate cake? And you can't help yourself but eat it when you were told that you have diabetes. That chocolate, that craving for that chocolate cake is an autonomous, you know, response. So the meditation, it will go into trance, take into trance the image of this chocolate cake in front of you. But instead of you eating it like you cannot control yourself, you see yourself shoving it aside, you know, and peacefully, you know, just moving and going your way and giving thanks to God for the wisdom.
Yes, it's very, very powerful, the system of meditating with a script. And those of you who have dropped in and just introducing yourselves to us, that's part of our committed guided meditation program. And there is a link that I'll give you if you're brand new so that you can, you can jump into our entry level at no cost. And you can experience the meditation scripting process, you know. And one of the, one of the great, so many great revelations that we've gotten from you, Shekma, Shekma. And I remember one of them, you know, people talk about affirmations. And you can actually affirm things that are not true. And we do it every day. So if we see that chocolate cake and the words come into our mind that, well, you gotta enjoy, you gotta enjoy life. You know, you know, we're constantly affirming things that are feeding into that conditioning. So you could learn more about that in our KGM program and also in our course, Maat 11 Laws. Now, we have Bird from, I believe he's in Germany. And he's asking a question that has come up before. He says, it seems there are different cycles driving our being. There are the monthly cycles that we're followed so far by the KGMs. And he is a subscriber, welcome, Bird. And then there's the winter solstice seems to follow a quarterly slash yearly cycle. Which are the main cycles one has to follow?
Well, the two main cycles are the monthly cycles, again, which is the relationship with the sun and the moon, new moon, full moon, again, that cycle. And then there is this solar cycle, you know, which has, which is, which goes for a whole year, you know, changing at each quarter, each seasonal quarter. So those are two main cycles, but that we track. Then there is also the circadian cycle, again, that we track its influence, you know, what is called by ancient, the ancient spiritual teachers, they call that the planetary hours. You see that? Okay, so there's the planetary hours, okay? And then now the Chinese, the Daoist system, they have a 24-hour, you know, 24-hour, you know, cycle. Again, with 12 divisions, okay? That is, that they, they call the branches and the stems and so forth. And then they have the, the monthly cycles as well, as well as an annual cycle that has to do with, you know, the faculties of man's subconscious. You see that? But you have to study Dao, Daoist philosophy to get those cycles. You see that?
Dua. And we have Shekma Haringala, who says, one of our students is from West Africa and is the most receptive time of the year at the same time in all parts of the world. E.G. in Cote d'Ivoire, there is no winter season.
The cycles are not dependent on seasons. They're dependent on certain biomagnetic, you see that? You know, changes that take place on the planet. And I made that clear, I explained that in last year's course, again, because people have the impression that, you know, the cycles have some, the annual cycles have something to do with, you know, the seasons. But those annual cycles, you know, are reproduced in the monthly, you know, periodicities, the circadian periodicities and so on. You see that, meaning that every night at midnight, your body experiences on a smaller scale what it experiences in the winter, what it experiences on the new moon. You see that? So these are biomagnetic, you know, effects, not seasonal. And that's been one of the biggest confusion that, you know, our so-called spirituality has given to the world. In other words, let me to elucidate further. You know, tonight at midnight, your body is going through the same thing that it goes through, you know, every new moon. You see, every winter solstice. You see that? It's going through the same thing, but on a smaller scale, a smaller level of impact.
And it looks like we have a couple of questions about fasting. We have Koran and Mark, who ask, would we benefit from fasting during the solstice?
Okay, fasting is a topic that needs to be revisited for the majority of people. You know, you fast, fasting is a change that occurs in your body. And people, you know, speak of fasting as a verb, you know, to fast. But look at it as a noun, meaning that fasting is something that occurs, you know, when you, when you, when you're deprived from food for certain hours. You know, if you go more than four or five hours without eating, your body goes into fasting mode. You see that? And with that understanding, you know, nutritionists and naturopaths, they discovered that when you go more than four, five, six hours a day without eating, that is without putting nothing in your body except water, okay, your body, a fasting, you know, effect is triggered in your body. That's why, you know, when you, when you, the first meal that you have in the morning from waking up from sleep at night is called the break fast. So if you're sleeping, listen to the traditional eight hours a day, then you're fasting for eight hours. You see that? And, you know, if you go to sleep, let's say at 11:00 P.M. and wake up 7:00 A.M., you fast it for eight hours. You see that? But actually, you break the fast when you eat something. And one of the most effective and beneficial way of fasting is what's called intermittent fasting. You may want to look that up on the internet. Intermittent fasting, meaning, let's say you eat, let's say you eat breakfast at, let's say, 7:00 A.M. and don't eat again for another five, six hours. So you fast for five, six hours. You know, then eat and eat and be done with eating for another four to six hours. That's your second fast of the day. And you see that? So fasting is not more, you understand it better when you approach it less as a verb than when you approach it as a noun. You see that you fast when you abstain from food for more than, let's say, four, five, six hours. You see that? I, my lifestyle is, I eat two meals a day. You said, I eat breakfast and I have nothing else to do with anything. And all the water goes into my mouth for the other eight, nine hours, sometimes 10 hours. Then I eat, you know, and so forth. And I got to the point where I don't crave food. You know, oftentimes I eat because I know it's time to eat, but I don't feel what we call hunger pains. You see that? Okay, and fasting, the fasting effect is a very powerful healing, you know, mechanism, you know. So you might want to go on the internet and look up, you know, intermittent fasting, look, read up a lot of articles on it. Okay, you're gonna have to weed out quacks from, you know, truth sayers and so on. But educate yourself on intermittent fasting because it's a very powerful way of detoxifying your body and rejuvenating your body with the dangers that can accompany, you know, unintelligent withdrawal of abstaining from food over a period of days and so forth. Because when you go in, when you deprive yourself, you know, of food for days or more than 12 hours, the body begins to digest, it's cannibalize its own protein and fats and so on. And some people can do more harm than good. But there's nothing else but good that will come from intermittent fasting. So explore that.
Yes, it's very powerful. And once again, thank you for introducing our society and our people to that decades ago. A lot of the things that you'll find on the internet now that are popularized, we've been exposed to for quite some time. Shekma, Shekma, going back to the observances of this time of year, we have a question from John. And I guess this ties into what's the so-called 12 Days of Christmas. He says, what is the symbolic meaning of the Day of Epiphany on January 6th?
Well, I should know the answer to that. See, the January 6th is my birthday.
I wasn't gonna say it, but we celebrate that day for sure.
Yeah, well, the meaning that you see, when you meditate on December 21st, 24th, properly, meaning with a script, just not being quiet for an hour or two or whatever, you know, that, and so on. When you meditate with a proper script, those four days, you should continue meditating until January 6th to anchor deeply, you know, the new behavior that you're going to put in place to change and to help rejuvenate, you know, the different parts of your body. Okay, and in many, in many ancient European countries and so forth, they often celebrate Christmas on January 6th. You see that, not on December 25th. Yes, and certain Roman provinces, for example, celebrate Christmas on the summer solstice. So these are things, you know, that people gotten wrong or right or sideways or whatever, that, you know, I just recommend people to educate themselves about. You see that? So January 6th is the date that you, that if you meditate, if you're prepared from November 11th to December 21st, and then did your meditation those four days, 21st to 24th, and then continue to hone your meditations until January 6th. And have a little celebration on January 6th. You see that? But then now get into the winters, the spiritual winter, you know, you know, cultivation, because you have to guide the process of rejuvenation. Nature is not going to take care of itself for you. You have to educate and be a, you know, a compliant, you know, part of the work that needs to be done to anchor the changes, you know, that you need to carry out your resolutions. If you want a better life next year, then you want to add the winter solstice, 21st to 24th, be in deep meditation with the proper chakras or mantras awakened within your spirit. You know, follow up until January 6th. And then I'll do the meditations to cultivate the spiritual, you know, part of your being that are in charge of renewal, renewing your life. You see that?
Well, that brings us to about the end of our time, Shekma, Shekma, tonight. And I want to thank everybody for being here. And what was just said is going to be detailed out in a powerful Winter Solstice 2025 course that we're going to be bringing to you. And those of you that are members of KGM, you're going to get a discount on that course, which is going to be very reasonable. And that course is going to give you several master classes with Raun Nefframen on this subject, as well as four days of guided meditation on the actual solstice. And we'll also have some support sessions to go through all of the details of how to use a meditation script, how to do the correct breathing, how to relax your body and help you to go into the deeper states of meditation, and also how to set your goals for the year and put those goals into powerful visualization scripts so that you can leverage the natural relationship between your spiritual development and the achievement of your goals and the meeting of your needs in your earthly life. So you'll hear more about that next week. Some of you put some very specific questions about health concerns, about spiritual readings. We try to keep these sessions on the subject at hand. I would recommend that you sign up for the courses to get more details and also visit some of our members, our priest members in your given area. So I'll put up a link for our link tree. So you can go there and you can find out if there is a group near you where you can get your question about your spiritual reading. That's another very important practice, doing a spiritual reading for the year to get deeper understanding when you're doing your meditations. So we do have that available in some of the areas of the country. And I will find that as we close and put that up. So Shekma, Shekma, just want to leave any last words with you before we meet again next week.
As part of the new year celebration in the Western world, it comes on the heel of Christmas. And one of the theme of Christmas is peace and goodwill to all men, meaning that the virtues that you should be cultivating is peace and goodwill to all men, you know, during the period of the winter solstice. But keep in mind that wishing peace on people, wishing peace on the world will not bring any of it into fruition. You see that? We have been, we were born conditioned to unpeaceful responses to challenges. When we're young, you know, we don't, we are, we are not wired to respond peacefully to somebody doing wrong to us or what we think is wrong to us or whatever. So being peaceful is something that you have to cultivate and put into your mind, your psyche, okay? Your physical body, instead of these hyper sympathetic responses to challenges and so on. So working on being peaceful during those four days, you know, of the winter solstice. And then cultivating it for the next three months, you know, corresponds to, it's the most receptive time of the year that your mind and psyche, you know, will respond, will be receptive to the challenges of your ability to be at peace. Well, that's the foundation of your success. If you, if you don't master the peace, you know, you cannot really enjoy life. Your life will, will go, will, will move between, you know, pain, pleasure, you know, and, and suffering. You want to be peaceful and enjoying the peace at all times for the rest of your life. That is a source of success and well-being. So please make a time to spend this winter solstice with us. Don't let it escape you. It's not accidental that you have crossed our path this year. And, you know, not considered to you or to us. So let's work together because as we can see what's happening in the world, the world has become very, very divided, very, very polarized, and it requires the work of enlightened people, spiritual people, to fix it. You see that? And I'm gonna tell you the truth here, don't play yourself cheap. Cultivate the spiritual teachings and you'll find that you have the power to change what's going on in this world. You see that? What's going on in the world is not subject, is not controlled by the mundane activities of the super-rich. The future of the world is in the hands of the spiritualized people. That's where the power rests. But you can let it go. You can let it go. The Tarot has a, has a picture of the devil as a goat-headed man, you see, with chains around a woman and around a man. And, but the chain has, the rings on this chain is so large that all the man and woman have to do, they slip from under it and free themselves. But they sit there, they sit there like cows being chased by lions. Peace and blessings to all of you.
All right, let's give it up in the chat to Raun Nefer Amen, Master Teacher, and we will you power, peace, and blessings. And look forward to see you next week. Anetshrok, Shaktam, Shaktam. All right, family, so you heard the science dropped. We cannot have a peaceful world unless we ourselves are filled with peace. So you want to get your start, your, your head start on this program that will be starting December 11th, and that will take you through the winter solstice, take you through the days of Epiphany, to the, to the Day of Epiphany, January 6th, and then support you throughout the rest of January, February, and into March of complete winter solstice season program. It will also help you to integrate what you've been learning and applying in your monthly KGM meditations. So if you're new with us, or if you're not, and you just want to start to get yourself in winter solstice mode, the place to go back to is the Amen module this week. It is a free entry-level module, and the link is up here on the screen. So if you have not joined us yet as a KGM member, it is free for you to go to this address, and you will log into our entry-level portal. And there you'll have probably about an hour and a half or two hours of instruction from the Master Teacher on the faculty of Amen and the power of inner peace, cultivating this unconquerable inner peace that we've been blessed with by being made in a divine likeness, and the mantras and the breathing pattern and so forth to start to familiarize yourself with your meditations there. And then next week, you'll be able to join us as we start the launch of our comedic winter solstice practice. I do also want to let you know that the first day of the winter solstice, December 21st, which will be dedicated to the cultivation of peace within, that we can make this a more peaceful world, will be free and open. We are envisioning an international mass meditation on December 21st. Everyone is invited to participate, whether they are subscribers or course members or not, in that free global meditation on December 21st. It will be broadcasted, and it will be celebrated and simulcasted, so to speak, in various locations that we have around the country, around the world. Maybe you can gather up a few friends and family members to this massive meditation on the 21st so that we can, we can synchronize our energies and commit ourselves to cultivating the highest within us during this very special time. And then if you want to join the course, you will have three more opportunities on the 22nd, 23rd, and 24th for a group, global guided meditation. And then after that, we will have a continuation of this process to help you to consolidate the work of the winter solstice all the way through January 6th and then beyond into January and February. So you'll hear more about that in your emails, and we'll be talking about it next week. But this is the place to start. If you haven't been doing your Amen meditations, you definitely want to tap into that. It's very, very powerful. So thank you so much for joining us tonight. We appreciate you, especially our subscribers who are supporting the efforts of Comedic Legacy. And we will see you next week. Peace and blessings, Sathapu.